Okay, ladies and gentlemen, according to my watch it's just seven o'clock, so we'll start. First of all, fire safety, we're not banning that an alarm go off, but should one go off, there are two exits, one's the door you walk in and meet outside, and the other one is up through the main building here. So either of those directions, alright? And secondly, is anybody apart from our own recording session, anybody else looking to record? No? Okay then, right, that's fine.
Can I interject?
Yes.
Would anybody like their contribution not to be included in the video? I've already spoken to Guy, I'm quite happy that the camera only records forward anyway, but it depends if you want the audio as well. If anyone would like to make sure their audio is not included? Nope, that's fine.
Okay, that's for us. Right, then, well, in that case, welcome to Reverend Gaskell and have a five-minute shitter.
Thank you. Perhaps it is me, but I felt bombarded by words this last week or so. Tweets from social media, interviews from radio or television, words from newspapers. The majority of these words are making claims, which are then responded to by counterclaims. These narratives of claim and counterclaim are being made in areas of war, in politics, in industrial relations, and at personal levels. In this frenzy of words, it can be difficult to see the wood from the trees. It can be difficult to hear the truth. Where is the truth to be found? In most cases, the truth is found somewhere in the middle, between one person's view of a story and another person's perspective on the same story. The Christian church is now observing the season of Lent. Christians are called to observe Lent by self-examination and repentance, by prayer, fasting, and self-denial, and by reading and meditating on God's holy word. This discipline encourages us to seek the truth in all that we say and do. In this cacophony of words, we all need to search for the truth. And I include the institution of the church in this as well. If not, our hearts will become hardened and we will be unable to listen to other voices, and our minds close to new perspectives. At the beginning of John's Gospel, Jesus is described as being full of grace and truth. And later, he records Jesus saying, "The truth will make you free." Whether you believe Jesus or not, I hope we can all agree that truth, truth, has to be foundational in building trust and community. So perhaps a good place to start is to use our words with care and to listen to each other more attentively.
Yes, that is so true. It's easy enough not to listen, isn't it? Thank you very much. Right then, well, we come now to public question time. We've got a few of you here, so it's, as you know, it says on here, you're asked to restrict your comments, but just make a quick comment. So Shaun, if you want to start, that's fine, if you've got anything to say.
I've always got something to say. Always happy to start. So, okay, well, let's say very quickly a few things I want to run through. First of all, you mentioned videos. I've got to mention, I mean, the video that was put out from the previous meeting where I meditated out of everything, that's not democracy. I think the public should be able to see a full view or nothing at all, but we need to be clear to the public. So I'm hoping this will be a full video, not a partial one. So secondly, I guess we're looking at the final reason we're here tonight, I guess it's the budget. Although I see we're not voting on a budget, we're voting on a precept leaflet, which is slightly concerning, I mean, we've seen four versions of a budget so far, I think, maybe five. We were at 464, then we went to 498, then we went to 469. We sort of yodded around on a number of figures over a period of months. And we've reached a point where we still don't seem to have actually voted for a budget. I mean, I did mention from the last meeting where you voted for a precept without a budget, which regardless of the rules, which are quite clear, it's just common sense. Common sense says that you produce a budget and the bottom line of that budget is your precept. So the budget has to be done before you can actually reliably have a precept. And then looking at some of the numbers that are in this budget, they're vague, I mean, the street marshals, there's now a figure in there of 6425, but I can see no basis for that number, I mean, it just seems like a bit of guesswork. So I don't see any substance behind the number. That number you could have guessed at 4,000, 6,000, 8,000. It doesn't actually apply to anything, it's not going to buy you street marshals for that figure. So I'm not sure what it's going to achieve. And there's a number in there that concerned me, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't know if we've got confidence in this budget and how it's been calculated. I know it's happened behind closed doors in various working committees, but I'm just not sure we have any confidence where the numbers have come from, how you've arrived at this figure. On the street marshals, I know you voted at the last meeting to get rid of the street marshals. You know I think that's a mistake. We have a lot of issues in the town. One is the pub watch scheme was closed down by Baines and we're trying to rebuild it, but that's in its infancy. You've cancelled the street marshals. The PCSOs are on a shift pattern that means that we very rarely see them in the town on the evenings. The police are response only. So that just leaves us with a CCTV system in the town. Now, I don't know how familiar you are with the CCTV system, but it's manned in both. It's only manned when either a police officer or a street marshal call them and ask them to man the camera. And if you have neither a police officer or a street marshal in the town, nobody's going to radio through, nobody's going to man the camera. So your CCTV system becomes useless as well. I would also point out that amongst other things, what is it, now, two years ago, most councils and councils pledged to try and make our streets safer after the sad incident with Selar Everard. And this is a retrograde step. Our High Street, it's got the worst situation in security that it's had in a number of years. So I just seriously hope, because there are incidents every week that the street marshals were taking care of. And I seriously hope there aren't any serious incidents that could have been prevented by the feds or the street marshals. So that is a concern.
Thank you very much.
If I could come back on a couple of things.
Yeah, sure.
Now, the video, obviously I did the editing, so I feel responsible for it. Now, the main reason was because we didn't have permission from anyone in the public to be broadcast. And I didn't want to be in a position of sticking something on YouTube that someone hadn't agreed to. So I figured we councillors can just manage, so I just diligently cut out all of the audience's participation. To be honest, I've still got the tapes, I think, but I didn't want to be in a position where somebody said, "I wish you hadn't broadcast that," so that's why I did it. It wasn't to try and hide anything, it was, first of all, I was quite disappointed because it was some quite good footage that we could have done, so I am sorry about that.
That was the criticism of the budget that was missing, and maybe that provides some balance to a debate.
Yes, I mean, I totally get it. I mean, hopefully, my amateur camera system will hold on to the end of the meeting and I won't have to cut anything out, so fingers crossed. Secondly, about the budget thing, one thing I just want to say to you is, unlike Baines, for instance, we don't have a limit on how much we can put a precept up.
I know.
And so...
But we're on 498, so we know that.
Well, exactly, and things are weird with the council, we're just to sit down and write everything we want to do, there's theoretically no limit to the precept. So I think one pragmatic option is to say, "Look, we think this is the maximum amount which is reasonable to spend, and we will have to fit some of our spending considerations within it," so that's what we've kind of done. And that has taken a lot of process, so we came, and other people came to us very early in the process and said, "Having consulted," we did try some consultation, I think we could do better, but we did iterate around, we did have discussions, yes, some of them in private. In future, perhaps, it might be an idea to get more people involved.
But not as part of the committee, but actually...
One at a time, can we?
But that's what I'm going to say about the budget.
One at a time, please.
That's what I say about the budget. No, no, hang on, sorry, no, 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 that's what I say about the budget. And I say another thing that the marshals, it's a really good point was made during that discussion, that the council don't really know how to run businesses and don't really know what's required. And I kind of couldn't agree more, I think that's the point. So what I'd like to see going forward is we engage with the stakeholders on the High Street and work together, so we become partners and try to promote the High Street, the evening economy. And it's not just a council thing, we've all kind of got some input on it. That wasn't the case before, it was us running the marshal system. Whether we're doing a good job, we can't say, so going forward, hopefully more people get involved. So thank you, just to come out in the street.
Right, move on, somebody else?
Sometime we'll have our local councillor giving something in support and appreciating what the town councillor has done. I certainly look forward to that time.
Only get three minutes.
A little, sorry?
Only get three minutes?
Yes. You have a lot more than three minutes. The next, I'll mention a letter which I've written to the Journal, responding in part to the interjections during the budget debate last week. Of course, or both sides of the debate were present in the video as far as councillors are concerned. Didn't contain interjections by the public, but that's not normally part of the video of a public councillor's meeting. The councillors to be praised for the thoroughness with which it's tried to deal with a stressful and difficult budget question this year. And the fact that it's taken several meetings and discussions to get as far as we have, and we've still got some more to go, is not a negative, it's a positive, it shows that people are getting of their time and trouble and taking care. And the main problem with agreeing the budget has been two points of view, I think most people know. One is that we were originally confronted with a 16% increase in the precept to take account of everything that the council wanted to do. Some councillors thought this was too large for them to impose on the public at a time of considerable stress in their sailing, and therefore there was discussion as to how this could be ostensibly limited. As far as I'm concerned, we've arrived at a reasonable compromise. And so the councillors to be praised for the progress which it's made.
Which was a good one.
For the size and interruptive for apparently dinner here around.
Okay, sorry, we've sort of taken up a bit of time here. Somebody else wants to speak? Yes, can I? Can you give me your name and what you're calling about?
I'd rather not, because they're difficult to...
Oh, okay, okay. So just a couple of feedbacks, actually, just from my three recent papers. I noticed that in the proposed budget, there's £8,000 allocated to capital projects. And that when you've done the balanced budget, that you're taking the expenditure of that, those items, from precept and other income. Just to say that, I'm assuming, because I haven't been able to track down, the council does also have a certain level of earmark reserves and general reserves, and so therefore are there any plans in the future? I would have liked to have seen whether they were planning to take that £8,000. That could have come from earmark reserves, if there were appropriate earmark reserves, which meant that perhaps you could have decided on a different precept of answer budget in that case. So that is something that I've seen done in other councils. The only other thing that I wanted to comment on was just to, hopefully councillors are aware that obviously with the end of this term of council and the start of a new council following the May elections, that the council will be asked to declare general power of competence. And the South Norton Town Council obviously has had general power of competence for the last four years. So I wanted to understand whether the councillors have been made aware that if they appoint a town clerk who does not have a silver qualification, that they will lose that general power of competence until such time as that clerk will be able to gain their silver. Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, somebody else?
Yep, thank you, I've written mine down, speaking within my allocated three minutes. So first of all, I want to mention the street marshals and the council's decision not to replace that service. Spoke to several members of the public and business owners, and it is absolutely conclusive that the public have not supported this decision. Probably would have been beneficial to have some level of consultation before making a decision based on your own vested interests. Linda, I obviously, you know, I do thank you for your very comprehensive response to my email. I was really disappointed by your different attitude, actually, that it would be up to the new council to reinstate this service. And some of the responses I got were that councillors were keen to mitigate the increase in the precept and keep it as close to the equation as possible. Perhaps not spending £8,750 in signage might help to with that. And the outcome of the initiative needed to be reviewed and the stats investigated. I do have the stats, I kindly wrote them to you from the office. It's really interesting that in the whole of 2021, there's 22 incidents, but for a six-month period in 2022, there's 140 incidents, so quite a significant increase. And the current council action may be in states and it's always impossible due to the drastic budget health provision. It's also really interesting that on 6th of June 2022, the council awarded the street marshal contract in Midas at the cost of £28,000, based on a report showing 24 incidents for a three-month period. However, now we've got 140 reported incidents for a six-month period, we no longer feel it's viable. So I'm interested to know, based on your own numbers, what would we actually get for £6,425? And why do you feel that considering there's an increase in incidents that we should decrease this very good service? We're constantly hearing it'll be up to the new council, and we do all live and hope that there is a new council entirely. You've asked for some positive feedback, and I did really like the proposed precept explanation leaflet. I think it was really plain and simple. I really like the council's strategic objectives to develop a strong sense of community, to encourage a civic pride in our town, and to be well-run council that delivers results. I would like to say it's really interesting that you continue to plan ahead for the new council, because you as a current councillor found every single one of those objectives.
Thank you.
If I may, if I may say one, I think it's great, we've actually got a few people asking questions, and we really want to encourage more people. A couple of things about that, is one, it would be great to get feedback in advance of meetings. So it's wonderful that people come and ask questions and stuff, it's difficult for councillors to answer in this environment. And it's almost impossible to actually act on them. So we've got our emails published, we've got our phone numbers published, and we try and be available at things like the farmers' market. It'd be wonderful if people could kind of engage with us outside these meetings and be able to work more cooperatively with people.
And like, just on that point, I just kind of reached my point, let's do apologize. And obviously we have asked questions, so I am keen to understand how many answers to that. So I know that your thing says that if you don't answer it today, we'll get a written response that will be on the next month's agenda. I don't think from hearing the recordings that have happened that that's actually been the case, that they have been addressed in the following agenda. So whether, Linda, you've got my address, you can find me, email me, respond to my questions.
I think, I think the things, if we, in order to get a genuine response, like an official question, it has to be written down. And with the best part of the world, there's only so many answers we can give here, because if we see things are mistaken, then everyone will get upset. So, but by all means, submit questions in advance and read them out at the meetings. And also, don't be, you know, in this council or the next council, be shy of coming and speaking to people, and if we can all work together in advance of some of these decisions, maybe we'll get a result that can make people want to have.
If you send me that question, I will answer it.
Okay then, so thank you all very much, I appreciate your being here. So we'll move on now to item 239, which is apologies for absence, you can serve it as a skinum. And I understand we've had apologies for the Brian Owens, because he's aware of them. Right, item 240, Mayor's Announcements. Just to let you know one or two things that have been going on. The Community Trust, they organised a meeting with officers and councillors of Baines to discuss the town hall and the High Street, and went along, visited both. We had a good walk down the High Street. But the best thing was actually turning up at the town hall and going in, wasn't it? It was great. And to actually see around. Since then, we've seen some film, which has taken it even further, but it was actually great to be able to go there. So when they do make it open for everybody to go, yeah, go and have a look. Community Trust also organised two meetings which were named Making Markets. I went to the first one, there were quite a few people there, I mean, there must have been 20-plus people there. And there were big sheets out on the table for you all to write what you think you'd want to do, so that these items could all be gathered together and come up with ideas. So I think Alex is planning on working with all the things that were written on, and there was a lot written down on that sheet the day I was there. And so he's planning on doing all that. And it'll be interesting to hear where he goes and how far he gets with it, so that's really good. We also, as you know, had an interview, had interviews for the town clerk, that's coming up in the meeting. And Saturday afternoon was the rugby club's reunion. It was absolutely brilliant. I think this is the fourth, fifth time, I think, we've been. And it's really great. And this time, I have to admit, we did sit and watch half the rugby match indoors, because there was a nice radiator we could sit next to, and it was great. But yeah, to be able to go in there and talk to people, all to do with the rugby club, was absolutely incredible. So it was good fun, and I will say also, they did give you some good food, so that was very nice. And the drinks, of course, because the bar's open. But yeah, it was really nice going there. So, and the one other thing, not that I've done, but that is coming up, is tomorrow evening is the Summer Valley Forum Zoom meeting. All right, so you don't have to go to a meeting anywhere, it's on Zoom. So if you want to, there's various things, there's WECO coming. And we're hoping that Radco are going to be on there, tell us a bit more about what's going on there. But there's loads on the agenda, so if anybody wants to, I can give them the details, so, you know, just send me a message tomorrow, and I can, if you go and log into it. Okay, well, that's me done.
Excuse me, I've come back from your mayor's announcement, I have a suggestion possibly for this council, or maybe for next council now. But it's so interesting hearing everything you've been up to, and sometimes I'm worried that only a small number of people really get to know. And it would be great, maybe, as an idea, that we could have our Mayor's Announcements submitted. So if they were written down and submitted as part of the agenda, then people could read them and obviously it could be published on the website, so anyone who aren't here could read them.
We can do that in future. Yes, never been done in the past, but, you know, not any more than being recorded on the minutes, that's the basics of what I say. But yeah, I mean, I'm really getting chuffed going to these things, they're brilliant. And it's so nice to see the people who, whatever the event is you're going to, they talk to you about what it is. And that's really good. And the history of the rugby club was great, you know, I had no idea when I first went about it, other than it was a rugby club. So anyhow, yeah, right then, so we'll put that in. Item 241, anyone have any declarations of interest? No? Okay, so we can move on from there. 242 is explosion in the press and public. We do have some items at the end which come under confidential. So does anyone have any problems with that? No? We're all happy to go ahead with that. Okay, yeah. Item 243, minutes of the last meeting. So has everybody had a chance to look at it? Cheers, Guy, thank you. Yeah, Steve proposed, Gordon second, thank you very much. Item 244, verbal reports from the town council standing committees. So we've got the staffing committee.
Yeah, that's me, thank you. So we had the first meeting with the staffing committee, thank you for electing me as chair. And most of the items are coming up later on the agenda tonight, to be sort of voted on. Quickly go down, we resolved to recommend the appointment of a civil contractor to provide financial support until we've got our F O reappointed. So that's on the agenda, item later. To pay staff for outstanding hours that accumulated over the last 24 years, we resolved to do that. We resolved to employ a local clerk for three months, a minimum of three months. We had an update upon the call, the clerk, about the clerk's vacancy and about, because of the lack of applicants, of employing people to sort of encourage applicants for the job, that's. To authorize a local clerk to develop a briefing to take a full organisation and staffing new structure for the Simon Oates in town council, because of where we are at the moment, and all the different jobs there are. It's an opportunity to look at the staffing and to make it fit to what we need, not to go straight back to what we had before, so that the staffing is fit for the... Yeah, that's everything from me.
Okay, thank you. Planning?
Planning, yeah, there's another incredibly exciting planning meeting. Lots of new comments, but one, one of the more significant ones is the Summer Valley Enterprise Zone, which the town council lent its support to, unlike the 400 odd residents who unfortunately didn't see fits for the application. Interestingly, the residents I've spoken to, when I've actually been able to talk to these people, they go, "Oh, it's not such a bad idea after all." If anything, I'd say we've probably got a bit of a communication issue, maybe it's a paid project. But when people have got the wrong idea of what benefits something like that will bring to the area, and it's got more and more objections than I think it's got any other applications. So maybe we all should have been maybe making a case to people before. As it is, we lent our support and we put a very detailed and sort of optimistic comment in, I think, which hopefully will work comfortably.
Okay, brilliant. So item 245, reports from councillors attending detailed meetings of outside bodies.
Rush to, Sappala from Youth Connect came to the last meeting. We've had a phone call just about which we discussed various things about the, what they do in the community, what they could continue to do next year. I've arranged to meet with him on Wednesday, and we're asked to discuss that further and to bring that information back to the working party of the whole council, what they're going to provide for us. So that's that. We had the Community Trust meeting at the beginning of February, which we went through the cultural programme, the WASS, oh, for next year, the WASS sale for the 3rd of June next year, town fair, the show, Topi July, the music festival in June. Betty's developing sponsorship packages to increase the funds we've got to pay the costs. We discussed coronation, how are we going to contribute to the coronation?
How did the discussion go?
Yeah, well... Yeah, well, we're looking at, Alex at the moment is putting in a bit, a luxury bit to try and get funds. The plan is to work with the railway, who are putting something on the sort of working there. And to coordinate community events that are happening. And also to do something, which is the proclamation of the town hall on the balcony, that sort of thing. We discussed the market events that you mentioned earlier before, haven't discussed. And, oh, Richard Burgess has voted as trustee and other people have been approached. So we hope to recruit some more trustees soon. The trust is also going to review its mission statement to the charity articles. It's time for that to be done. We had a meeting of the cultural consortium on the tenth of February. Beth chaired, we went through the finances, the work that they're doing. There's a bench trail, if you're aware, where there's old cast iron bench ends that are to be refurbished. We looked at the shortest, we made the shortest of artists that's approaching those for final design. So that's going ahead and she's been looking at sites that they're going to go onto on the High Street. We did a debrief of the Wasail Celebration Recovery, which was very positive, well attended, a good event. We've got quite a lot of feedback from members of the public during and after soundstudies. We discussed a heritage trail, Soundwalks Heritage Trail, sort of web based using QR codes around the High Street, that's going ahead, she's got some avenues to explore for that. And then we talked about the Summer Art Trail, that's on the theme of my High Street. That feeds into the music festival, it's going along with the same time with the music festival, that Summer Art Turn, end of May, beginning of June. We're about to sort of launch the community art project that night, we've done that. And that will go to schools and peerage groups and individuals. And we were already, actually just running unit fourteen. And the work displayed in the shops and at the music festival and the town show and the town fair. The idea was that my High Street was to focus on high street businesses and try and bring some attention to that. And then we had the town hall update, nearly finally. We had the town fair committee meeting towards the end of February. Just plenty of town show, the town fair, and also again, that discussion of the music festival. And all of those are going on nicely and will be as good as been happening in the past.
That's brilliant.
And then just what you said about the market meeting, I was at first either the market meeting. And there's very good, there's some good ideas coming from that.
Indeed, yeah. And I understand the following day, when they had the other meeting, there were some good ones there too. So it's really nice to know.
Yeah, there's sort of several members of the public come on.
Yeah.
I agree, a bit like my previous suggestion, I think last council, the one before, I actually just added an update with the Community Trust to the agenda. So we're writing down so people could consider it and maybe ask questions about it. Because again, it's one of these things, we say these things verbally. It's great that people got these updates, so I think everyone on outside bodies, it'd be a great idea if they could submit something and then we can kind of publicise. It's a good idea, isn't it? With so much going on, I kind of forget all the things that happened, but I want them to be recorded.
Same here as well.
Planning, well, if you can keep it as a one liner, I can, I feel I'm quite good at that sort of thing. As I will, police and crime commissioner forum, which I attended. It's funny, I always said that we think the police should be more involved as we scrap marshals and the neatest to a forum, a few of us turned up. However, it was very constructive and I did speak to them and said perhaps in the news session, which we keep on talking about, maybe the police might be well advised to come and visit us and advise us on how we should maybe go forward in terms of delivering security services. Because we don't necessarily know the best. That's it, thank you.
Okay, done, right. No one else? No?
Well, just one thing, I've been in contact with a contractor for a while and by the moment the project's held up, we could have one objection. No. And I've sourced the, I've sourced the actual original sign, a well-brewing company, but the guy was at extraordinary price for it. Seven hundred quid. It was a bit different when I told him that the auctioneer would take forty per cent.
Right. Okay, so we'll move on to item two four six, council payment. So we've all seen the ones over two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, can I just, these are accounts paid, but they've already been set, haven't they?
They have, the financial regulations require us to pay, I think we do check-ins every two weeks. So unless there is something that hasn't, so all these accounts will be in line with budget expenditure or previous decisions, accounts was made. So we're just, we're paying services, so they are authorised by two members. And maybe they'll ask me. So it's, yeah, there is a.
I just had a very teensy, weensy little worry about Ben's to the contractors on the town hall, which is quite important that their evaluations are settled on High.
Yeah, yeah. There has been an issue with one of the invoices, which isn't on there, which was sent but not received, so that'll be on the next one. So we are keeping an eye on it.
Was it sent, could you say?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened to Mickler's.
Okay, yeah.
So anybody have any questions on over two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, well, just the well over ones, I just think about, that is money that came in to put the well over walk.
Yeah, that was a grant.
Reset for the grant.
Yeah.
For the total size of the works, yeah. Not sure about the additional words.
It's on there, it's on there.
Is it not on there?
And can I just ask about the signage, town park?
That's the same.
That's it, yeah. Which signage is that?
It's good, the maps.
That's not there?
No. Is it? Oh, I don't know.
No.
I don't think, no, I don't think it's gone in yet. We paid for it, so we're going to do that. Or then we'll go and sort them there.
Any queries then on over two hundred and fifty? What about under two hundred and fifty? Any queries there?
No.
Well, just, again, not trivial, but I see the toilet round things are to be reclaimed from the Community Trust. I was wondering whether that might possibly be the town trust, which is responsible for the bill or.
Yeah, that's a point.
It is the Community Trust.
Things Community Trust as well, it's really the main fabric of the building is the town trust, whereas the internal is Community Trust.
So I did ask previously back again, what are they called, electric can raths? As opposed to the paper houses? And I saw that was a Community Trust issue, so.
Small stuff installed is Community Trust.
So everybody happy with those? Yeah.
Anything to add to that?
Two? Yeah? Okay, proposed by Steve, seconded by Richard. Okay then, on to item two four seven, the insurance renewal. So consider giving delegated authority to Paul, along with two members, to be appointed at this meeting, to review the town council's insurance and to appoint a suitable insurance broker. But we only have two quotations, or we've requested two quotations. So.
Is there a problem in our previous grant?
No, it's just due diligence. So we reapproached the practitioners by, there's three or four brokers, it's quite a hot market at the moment, insurance wise and town parish council sector. There are issues with things like getting covered listed buildings and so on. And it's always worth just making sure that what we're paying is, what we should be paying. I mean, insurance premiums have gone up between twenty five and fifty per cent in the sector. So it's a worthwhile exercise. I have received the one quotation, I'm still waiting for the second. And then the anomaly for this council is you have a listed building that's in the process of being refurbished, so it's very, very difficult to get that covered. Purely because of potential, there's a higher potential of accident.
Yeah, we had, halfway through last year, we proposed a separate policy upon the town hall. I think it's five grand.
Yeah, it's, it's not insignificant, it's much more than that now.
There's all sorts of this.
Well, it's under a particular, I've forgotten the name of the contract, but it requires both a contractor and the owner to be made on the insurance, which complicates it and creates a higher risk. So this year it might, well, it could be higher. So we will wait and see on that one.
Do you expect a new project?
Possibly not, but it's, in previous years, councils have been able to go into three and five year deals and they get some money off. No insurance broker, including Zurich, are offering anything other than single year contracts. And a number of action will now enter the market. So it's just, it's a challenge, insurance is a challenge at the moment.
Pete?
What sort of cost are we looking at for a year? What for the insurance?
Well, I've only got one quote at the moment and I haven't received the other. So it's, and I'd need to look at your budget and work out whether we're already heading for overspend on that. So I can't answer that question at the moment, because I prefer to have both quotes sitting there and then talk to the insurance companies about it. The one that we've got has had to go to a different insurer of the listed building. So one element, the council insurance, is under one insurer of the listed building over another. And that's not, from experience doing other stuff that I do, that is not unique. There are at least two other councils I know of in different parts of the country that have to go to different people and insurance, insurance companies are refusing. So Ecclesiastical won't cover it. And that'll do others, but I won't do this one. So it's just a challenge.
Right then, so are you all happy to delegate this to Paul?
Yes.
Anybody not? Well, that was my next question. Who would be happy to work with Paul on this? Richard, Pete? Anyone else? Do you want to have a?
No, you only wanted to.
I'm happy for as many people as who want to be. I'm sure that.
We had too many, I was just going to have a vote on it, but that's fine. If we've got that sorted, then that's absolutely fine. Thank you both. Right, item two four eight, the update of the town hall transformation, you've all had the report.
There was a report that was sent out.
Yes, it was sent out.
To members. I'm not sure when you received it, but it, unfortunately Nicola couldn't be with us tonight. So this was, this was instead of her presence.
Yeah.
It's quite comprehensive.
It is comprehensive, yes. So anybody have any comments, any questions? Yes?
Obviously you're invited to listen, so I haven't had a chance to read it. Is there anything that we should be discussing in the middle here? I didn't, yeah.
I don't.
There's nothing that's, there've been a couple of side meetings recently, she was at the last meeting. And since then, we've had a monthly side meeting where a number of issues, and you'll all be familiar with the issues of the building, are being discussed. And a couple of decisions are being made about taking walls down and so on. Because in the long run, although initially taking it down is more expensive, in the long run, there are savings to be made because the quality of some of the previous works and possibly less likely to be desired. So it's, there are no, there are no major issues at the moment. I mean, the previous major one was the other pillar, which has now been addressed. The holdup was when we demolished the wall at that end. So that decision's been made. So it's now moving forward, there is momentum. It's still behind schedule, but it's moving in the right direction. And there is still an element of contingency.
Okay, anyone else got any questions? Okay, done, right. Well, we'll move on to item two four nine, the precept leave permit.
So just to sort of put an introduction to this, obviously a decision was made a few days after I arrived to reduce the, to reduce the precept request. So what we're seeking now is a balanced budget. It's not unknown in the public sector, you will remember the challenges that principal authorities have had because they've had to budget against a reducing, significantly reducing income. That decision was made to reduce our expenditure because of the challenges with regard to developing income streams that the council has. There is little or no opportunity for the council to increase its income. If the neighbours would like to give us a car park, we'd be in charge for, that'd be very nice. But it's unlikely, it's not happened anywhere else after Molten Street, I think. But so it's down to balancing the actual budget because although it has been suggested that, and it is very good practice to have a budget to set precept against, at the end of the day, that wasn't possible because a decision was made to reduce the precept. So the budget has to fit in within the revised projected income. And that will, so we will need to look at that as a council so that as of the first of April, we will have a revised, a revised budget. But we do need to make a decision about the overall costs that we're going to incur under those headings, which haven't changed under the budget twenty twenty three, twenty four. And you do have a couple of suggestions at the back with regard to where some, where some variances, where some. um, with regard to, um, uh, where some, uh, where, where some variances, uh, where some reductions could and should be, uh, and have to be made. Um, the issue with the original, um, figures is that the original, um, uh, the original, uh, figures were a thousand pounds out, so actually, uh, we've had to find another thousand somewhere, um, on the top bit, um, to, uh, to make it balance with the bottom bit. Um, and you'll see that I redid that on the, on the, um, on the agenda, uh, bit, so, um, that's the first element. The second bit, um, is actually the information that's going out to, um, uh, uh, people. Um, so, uh, on the other side, uh, we've obviously got to, uh, reduce the, um, the hundred and twenty two pound forty. Um, uh, I need members, uh, because, you know, the best will in the world, um, I, I'm, it's a bit of a steep learning curve, um, and so I need to make sure that you're happy with the wording in this. Um, we, we have changed a few bits, um, so, uh, the public annual town meeting, um, uh, I need a date for, um, uh, when, I, I believe you're going to fill that, uh, uh, do that at the same time as the, um, uh, the civ, uh, civic awards. Uh, the annual meeting of town council is not going to happen on Saturday, twenty seventh of May, um, because, uh, legislation requires that meeting to be held within fourteen days of the election. With the best, with the best will in the world, um, which, um, uh, does not fit in that, so. And you normally have your meetings on a Monday, so I think, from memory, and I will look at my diary, that it will be the thir- Monday the thirteenth that will be your mayor making. My understanding, um, is that, um, uh, Midsummer Norton does not have, uh, like a ceremonial mayor making ceremony.
No, we have a gentleman.
So, um, uh, so in other councils that I've, uh, I, I've been to, that, that is a big, I, I beg your pardon, I got that the wrong day, it's the fifteenth, it must, must be football on the thirteenth. Um, so, uh, so the election is on the fourth. I would like to do it the next, uh, the week after, but we can't meet the, uh, the required, uh, three clear days. Um, so it will have to be on Monday, the fifteenth of May, so that's your annual town council meeting. A lot of people call it an AGM, but the public sector do not have annual general meetings. Um, they have, uh, annual meetings of town parish council.
So the fifteenth is the public annual town meeting?
No, the fifteenth will be the annual town council meeting.
Annual meeting will happen.
Yeah, okay, the annual, the, the public annual town meeting we have on twenty seventh of May. Um, I have it, uh, on, uh, reliable evidence from Caroline that we have booked.
Three times.
Yeah, so we've, we've, um, we've booked the centre, uh, we just need to understand the timings for that, Brian. So that, uh, we can confirm.
And are we including the civic event on the Monday, the fifteenth?
Uh, well, Monday the fifteenth is the night that you will elect your new mayor.
Yeah. So do we actually want to have the civic awards for the public annual town meeting on the twenty seventh? At the centre?
I think that's just the idea.
That's the better.
Yeah, so the civic awards will happen on the twenty seventh.
Yeah.
Um, and it will just be a business meeting on the fifteenth. So, uh, so the, the next question really is what time, twenty seventh, do you have it daytime, do you have it evening?
Historically, it's been evening, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, rewards, six, six thirty usually.
Something like that, yes.
Do Godfather in your thoughts?
There is.
Well. When we had, when we had it in the church.
Yeah.
Last time.
Where are we having it this time?
We may have to check, we may have to check.
Yeah, we need to check if it's free, won't we?
What's that?
The centre.
No, we booked it, Caroline.
Oh, what time is it, free for the day, you haven't, please, we've asked at specific time. Okay, so if we said six o'clock or six, six thirty then?
Okay, so we'll sort that out. Um, the, the other, um, dates, I believe, um, are, are correct. Um, so, yeah, A, it's the, uh, it's the, the suggestions for, um, the, uh, um, the revised, um, budget allocation, um, and, um, probably not at this meeting, but you have, I have got to get this out to the finance people ASAP. So I need a decision on your figures and if you've got anything.
That's, that's, that's true.
That's the, that's the middle one, that's the revised one, um, so, um, I'm happy to do whatever you want to do, happy to, um, I'm not familiar with the area of our reserves, I suspect that they're all, um, allocated, you can, uh, you can draw stuff out of your.
First thing, one of the other things means these, these, um, connect with the living activities. They've spoken about it initially as the thirty two, um, something by various disciplines, but then they've talked about twenty four thousand, you can do the budget off. You've done their offer on, on twenty four thousand. So I'm not, I don't, we've taken money off them, but that's what they were sort of weird. So, you know, if we need a thousand pounds somewhere else, it's, that's, that's not expected in that. Because it went from twenty five to, well, thirty two, wasn't it, it went from twenty five to twenty to, so twenty four is the figure that we've talked about there.
So who would you like that?
Yes, Steve.
Am I, am I thinking that the reserves are already lower than what the suggested amount should be? Somebody mentioned reserves before in the public, I think from the last meeting Brian said we've taken some from reserves to help budget and we're already lower than what we're su- supposed to be. We've thought to keep a certain amount in store for any contingencies and the thing is already low than what it should be.
Now, it was mentioned in the, we, uh, general reserves, no?
Yeah.
So, uh, we, we haven't any provision in this to rectify that. But, but.
We've got no contingency, you should, uh, the minimum you should have in your general reserve is three months' expenditure, um, a minimum. Um, and the JPAC guidance says, uh, between three months and twelve months. So, um, and this is based on the fact that you won't get your first, um, preset payment until the end of April. So you need at least the balances in general reserves to get through the first month, because you've got no income coming.
Yeah.
So it, there, there are reasons why, that is, and the, and the internal auditor I have been talking to, um, uh, just organizing, uh, for year end, um, will be commenting if we are lower than, than that. Um, so you just, you just expect that in mind. What should normally happen is you should always be put a ten percent, um, uh, contingency. And actually, if everybody put ten percent last year on their budget, um, they would have, uh, almost to the, uh, uh, last percentage point, uh, identified how much inflation's been going up by. So, um, you know, it's, uh, there's nothing in the madness.
So what do you?
What do we go to?
Do you need now to know, are we happy to go with that figure?
Yeah, if you've got a thousand pounds that is now floating about, do you want to, uh, put that anywhere in particular?
Is that?
General reserve. Anything?
If we have a budget.
Well, I don't know, you can pull it back on to the street marshals' ones, just in case we need.
If you go into general reserves.
Could it?
Yeah. If it's low.
Yeah. Well, it's certainly lower than the three months anyway, so. Yeah, okay, let's put it back in the reserve.
Yeah, anyone else want to? No?
Just to check, the, the four seven six two forty, that's only eight percent increase in the preset, right?
Yeah, that's, um, so your original, um, your original, uh, 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 preset, uh, required, uh, your original expenditure, um, was five hundred and seven thousand and eleven pounds. Um, and your original preset, um, request would have been four hundred and ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty one. And the other three figures there from West Clues allotments and miscellaneous income would have, uh, come, come up to five hundred and six thousand and eleven. That's why I said the original, um, the original leaflet was a thousand pound out. You have now reduced that, um, uh, the preset from, uh, four hundred and ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty one to four hundred and sixty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty nine pounds, ninety three p. Um, but we rounded it up for the leaflet, so the, um, uh, the, um, uh, the, the middle figure is this four three five, that was your, your previous preset. Now that's your preset, uh, this year, uh, twenty two, twenty three. Um, so ignore that, because that doesn't come into the calculations. So four six nine plus the other three come up to four seven six and your total expenditure, based on the revised num- uh, numbers there, is four hundred and seventy six thousand, two hundred and forty pounds. So you've, uh, you've knocked basically twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy one pounds off your expenditure. And theoretically, from the last meeting, um, we could have, uh, we could have taken the entire amount upstream marshals, because that's twenty eight thousand, and then a thousand pounds off elsewhere. But there was a request that, um, the street marshals, uh, uh, the, uh, the, there was some level of, uh, flexibility for the new council to review this street marshal initiative and to look at what they needed, when they needed, and it would, uh, and that might, my assumption from that meeting was that, um, uh, that you want the new council to have a level of flexibility. Um, but, um, as is being mentioned, uh, publicly, in order to go back to street marshals, you do need to do due diligence in this council. Um, so we need to, um, uh, you need to consult with all the other bits and pieces, um, with the, uh, uh, if you're going to walk in whatever way.
Yeah, so certainly in the way of, uh, sorry.
Go on, you carry on then.
I just thought we was going to change it from street marshals to city council.
Yeah, so that was going to be my point actually, weren't we going to say security services, something like that, to have the flexibility, yeah?
Otherwise, we're, it's, you know, you never have to be marshal, but we haven't decided that.
Yeah.
The, the devolved service element, where did that come from? Who did, who devolved it to?
I've devolved to fair and service.
Because, uh, um, the, uh, it's not a statutory, um, uh, it's not statutory service. Um, and devolved, um, devolving something is normally from a another body. Um, uh, yeah, for this council had a contract with a company to provide street marshals, was nothing devolved about it. So I, I'm just, uh, yeah. It's just, uh, I think we were talking about use of language.
Yeah, it's just confusing.
So, uh.
I, I certainly agree with the consultation.
From the news source.
The, the consultation should be on whether we're spending public money on services that we're not obliged to, to, to offer, uh, rather than the other way around. Uh, don't really consult about, um, not enthusiastically renewing when they can actually sell.
So should that be reclassified as something like street security or something like that?
That's what we're saying, yeah.
Yes, so I'll put security services.
Okay, are we as far down here as you need?
Yes, I'm sure happy with the, um, revisions, I think in the year.
You need approval and a second one. Richard and Pete.
Checking things, we have got to satisfy those in favour.
Yeah, sorry, those in favour? Yeah, okay.
I'll make it a four.
Certainly we said.
Not this, okay.
Nice to see you.
Yeah.
Shall, shall I remind everyone that we're still understanding auditability?
Yes. Okay, so, um, item two fifty. Any applications?
I can't, I can't read the side of the asking for, because he's got two applications. Um, and the second one seems to be going back to the first one. Uh, it looks okay in the mail anyway. Whatever he's asking for.
Can I propose a little comment?
Yeah, and the other one that came through, that was sent to us, that's not on here.
Uh, that would go to planning committee.
Yeah, okay, it's time to have one.
Yeah, so I'll, uh, I'll send that to planning chairman next week.
Brilliant.
There's, uh, there's a few, uh, there were a few, uh, decisions as well.
Okay then, so no comment for that application? Everyone happy with that? Yeah, okay. And we now come on to, um, item two five one, which starts the confidential. So, sorry, can I just say, I think you need to tell me why you declare it confidential under the local government?
Because it's subject to contract and it's staffing issues. And if you look in, uh, Charles Arnold Bay, you will find the reasons.
Okay, but you just always need to notify me, just, yeah?
Yeah, there are four, um, areas that councils can go into confidential session or.
And that's why you go into confidential now.
Yes, yeah, because it's a.